I'd like to call this meeting of the Mawa Board of Education Public Work Session to order for February 12th, 2018. Would you please take the roll call? Mr. Bleecker.
Of course. Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Mr. Kesmarski.
Here.
Ms. Conica.
Here.
Ms. Mavertish. Dr. Morthe. Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
Ms. Secone.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
And Ms. Baron.
Here.
Adequate notice of agenda of this meeting has been provided to the Ridgewood News and the Records specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will meet on February 7th, February 12th, 2018 in the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Everybody please rise for the salute. Would you please lead us in the salute, Mr. Gallo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I may have a motion to recess for executive session. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. This will be very short. Agreed?
Monday.
I was like, we have to review the agenda. He's like, oh, okay, yeah, but it's Monday. I would say noon, but. I don't know what to say.
I was like, you have to review the agenda. He's like, oh, okay, yeah, but it's Monday. I would say noon, but. I don't know what to say.
I'm like, it's Monday. Yeah. I was like, you have to review the agenda. He's like, oh, okay, yeah, but it's Monday. I would say noon, but. I don't know what to say.
Something came in as well. Monday. Yeah. I was like, you have to review the agenda. He's like, oh, okay, yeah, but it's Monday. I would say noon, but. I don't know what to say.
It's Monday. Yeah. Yeah, they can connect to me. We can go on the lines.
He doesn't like big ideas, man.
No.
He says it's a terrible program.
Yeah. When you're recording this portion, this is going to be.
No. I don't start until after they come back. I'll wait until they come back.
You can stop this session and I'll start recording. There is no way to.
To cut it out?
At this point, we need to.
Yeah. Yeah, mine, I can, I confuse two together.
Yeah, we would do that as well.
And I can, I can probably cut them apart too, but I haven't done that yet.
We are back. I'll give you the bag.
Do you really?
Do you really? I think that's wonderful.
I see the new pictures on the wall. Very nice.
You're welcome. How's your table?
It's good.
Good?
Not moving.
How's your table, Rick?
Yeah?
It's on wheels.
Somebody's been on wheels. Don't touch the wheels.
I just blocked.
I have a motion to reconvene, please. Mr. Wenderkowitz, second by Ms. Conica. Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Okay.
Superintendent's report.
I do, I do. Hello, everyone. I just have one brief report this evening, something that I don't typically do, but it's certainly worthy of doing. We have, in our district, we are fortunate to have a flight team. And a flight team is a group of teachers, child study team members, Lisa Rizzo. They are a group of people who have been trained to deal with crises. So if there is an issue in our district, if we have something going on, we have a group of trained individuals that can go and work with students and with staff. I bring this up not because, thank goodness, we haven't had a crisis in our district this year, but some of our neighboring districts have. Ramapo High School lost a student last week, as did Midland Park last week as well. And the Hillsdale School District in Bergen County lost a staff member. I bring this up in general terms because it was our flight team that was called to go to all three of those districts to work with students and to work with staff during their crisis. I bring it up because it's pretty amazing when there are things going on, that you have people who can go and help make things easier in other places. And I think that we're fortunate to have them on staff. So I'd like to recognize Michelle Hughes, Dawn Savistano, Jennifer.
Piella.
Piella, thank you. Regina Businelli, Kathy Carisi, Rebecca Cusick, John Macri, and Craig Alfano, as well as Lisa Rizzo, who took time away from us and very worthy to be able and to go help a fellow district. I was at a Bergen County superintendent's meeting this morning, and I had the superintendents in those districts come up and thank us for allowing our staff to take time out of our day to go there and help them, and it made a world of difference. So unless you've ever experienced it before, you don't quite know how to get through it, we're fortunate to have such really great people on staff. So I wanted to say that publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bleecker, do you have a report for us this evening?
Just to follow up on what I mentioned at the last Board of Education meeting with regards to the budget. As it stands right now, we haven't heard any update from the governor as far as a postponement of his budget address. So right now, we are working under the assumption that it's going to remain as it always has been until I hear otherwise. Just that the Board of Education, the public, has dates of what that looks like. With the deadlines that we have related to a submission of the preliminary budget and adoption of the final budget, we would, on the March 14th Board of Education meeting, that's when we would have on the agenda action for a preliminary budget to be submitted to the county office. The county would then do a review of that budget, come back to us with any adjustments that they may recommend. The Board of Ed still has the opportunity to make changes to it beyond that as well. And the final budget would, slash budget hearing, would be held on April 25th. That, again, would allow us plenty of time to take into consideration any adjustments from the county, as well as meet the deadline to submit the final budget, which is March 12th. That falls in line with our current Board of Education meeting calendar. Again. I'm sorry, May 12th, May 12th. I apologize. The final budget hearing, one more time, is April 25th. That would meet the deadline of May 12th. If there is a change to the budget address, which may necessitate us having an extra board meeting out of order, I'll certainly let the board know that and do the adequate advertisements to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Fair, anything for us this evening?
I have no report.
Okay. My report. I had a request from Mary Beth Duffy of the Mawa Schools Foundation to remind everyone that Casino Night is Thursday, March 1st, and tickets are still available. She wants to give a gentle reminder to all the board members to let you all know. The doors open at 6:00 PM and the gaming tables open at 7:30. So if you want more information, go to www.vmsf.org for more details and to register. Let's see, on February 23rd at 7:00 PM, the world famous Harlem Wizards will visit Ramapo Ridge Middle School for an evening of fun and great fundraising to benefit the Mawa High School 2018 Senior Safe Graduation Gala. The Wizards will play a game against a team of Mawa administrators, teachers, community leaders, and community members. You can go to their website, harlemwizards.com, or reach out to Cindy Van Alstein, who is the Mawa High School HSA 2018 Gala president. Let's see, there's some congratulations here to Carolyn Mavertish, who was recently honored for her four years in the Bergen County High School Chorus. The North Jersey School Music Association recognized Carolyn as the only student in the region to perform with the Bergen County Chorus for seven years. And so that includes her time at Ramapo Ridge and Mawa High School. So congratulations to Carolyn. Congratulations to the following Mawa High School Band Seniors for being accepted to the NJMEA All-State Symphonic Band. Kristen Springer for flute and Justina Kender for trombone. And we also have congratulations for Mawa High School ninth grade band member, Jettie Lee Zee, for being accepted into the NJSMA Region One Junior Concert Band. And then we had our Academic Decathlon, and they scored thirteen individual awards and qualified to move on to the state competition. We've got Enver Amin, Spencer Sandusky, Paul Kipers, Renee Kanter, Varun Patel, Ryan Adani, and Natalia Fay. So great job for the Academic Decathlon. And last but not least, we have a reminder from Lennepi Meadows that this week, February 12th through 16th, is Random Acts of Kindness Week. So if you are already kind, please continue to do so. And if you're not, this week is a perfect opportunity to change your ways. And that is my report for this evening.
I felt like you looked over here when you said that.
Just making sure. Do you have any board committee reports for this evening? Mr. Gallo?
Just prior to today's meeting, the Finance Committee met with Kyle, and we started kickoff the budget process. And we also had a brief discussion on a review of the Cell Tower RFP that we received a few weeks ago. We have another step in front of us, but we hope to bring the recommendation to the board in the next few weeks. Negotiations will be meeting after this meeting to discuss ongoing negotiations with the administrators and supervisors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wenderkowitz, yes?
Yes. In front of you, I'll have a packet, if I borrow them from the school boards this Saturday. Not the shooting tag, any of those episodes. And it will be the material that I was able to acquire from the various meetings I have attended the last month or so. Beginning on January 16th, at the Hudson County School Board presented a dealt, excuse me, presented, which dealt with communication tips dealing with public or news media. There were no handouts available, and there's nothing in your folder. On January 31st, at the Bergen County Business Board Association, it was a roundtable format. There were four different areas you could go to. Unfortunately, I could not get to do board members, but there was nothing available. But they dealt with sexual abuse issues and answers by Lester E. Taylor, a partner of Florio Perucci and Fader. The handouts are in there and dated, the 31st. There was a legislative update by Sharon Seidler, one of the legislative advocates. And there is an interesting handout there, that's worth reading. It shows some of the things that are presently being talked about at the legislature. Then there was a benefits, a benefits program. I have not received, when you get home this evening, in your email, if I beat you home, you will have that handout. And it's interesting, especially the negotiators that I want to get. On February 5th, I attended the Passaic County School Board Association, top discussed school funding, school choice, state of education. Presenters were Sean Spiller, NJEA Vice President, Ginger Snitzer, NJEA Director of Governmental Relations. That's Christopher Jones from the Jersey School Boards, Legislative Advocate. The meeting was scheduled too early with a very little opportunity for definitive sense of direction. There's no budget yet. And they have no idea, all they can do is they say, well, maybe Murphy will do this, or maybe Murphy will do that. They have no idea. Because Murphy's coming in new, his budget presentation will be on March 13th, 14th? I have it in here.
There's a bill out there for the 13th.
13.
Best of my knowledge, he hasn't signed it yet, but.
Within 24 or 48 hours, you'll get your numbers.
Correct.
So that meeting, your meeting, can be pushed back a little bit. School aid numbers will be released. Schools estimated to be $900 billion underfunded, if you want to do full funding that he wants to do. But real numbers are closer to over $1 billion. At this point, they expect the same, same rate as last year. Governor is looking at two millionaires tax increase, but fear that such a move would drive those one percenters out of the state by placing, and then placing the burden on the rest of our taxpayers. Relying on legalizing marijuana, not a sure bet. Superintendent's cap will be discussed by the Senate Budget Committee this coming week. Thoughts are to cap will return to local control rather than what we have now. Reason B, we lost, we lost a lot of good people, and those who filled the gap, because the company excluded, we're not experienced. And we're learning on the job. We've been very lucky with what we have. I'm not kissing that. Cadillac tax on health benefits, 40% excise tax on health benefits. That's been pushed back to 2022. We're not going to touch it right. Better government's a little area of that. Now, one of the interesting things, Dennis, is Senate Bill 1414, it's called Passing the Trash. It's passed the Senate, will probably pass Assembly this week. While an explanation is in, this is in your packet briefly. Normally, when a school district employee is released and vetted by another employer, the previous employer will admit that the employee was, in fact, employed by the district. Nothing more is said. Under this new law, if an employee has been released for any sexual misconduct or child abuse, the prospective employee must answer three questions. And those questions, they're actually, they're in your packet.
Been the subject of any child abuse or sexual misconduct investigation by the employer, law enforcement, or state agency. Been disciplined, discharged, non-renewed, asked to resign, et cetera, while allegations were pending under investigation. And finally, had a license certification suspended while allegations pending under investigation or due to.
Thank you. The previous employer must then certify that the employee's responses were correct. Additionally, this law will, would prohibit confidential separation agreements where a sexual misconduct or child abuse case is involved. Will not affect other confidential separation agreements. This all occurred on Saturday, February 10th, by the way. They had Diana Pesquale, Pesculi.
Pesquale.
All right. She, New Jersey Chief Public Affairs Officer, offered a continuing explanation of the new school rating system. For high school, if you look at the, if you look at the ratings system, it's confusing. In fact, I dashed an email off to our superintendent and said, criteria is not correct, there's something wrong. And what it was, they based it on, for high school students, on graduation, rate of graduation, absenteeism, park scores. In the elementary and middle school, scores are based upon absenteeism, park, and student progress on park tests. The new ratings were established to comply with the federal Every Student, the SSA, Every Student Success Act. Measuring key areas of the progress, to measure the key areas of progress. That's why the numbers are skewed. They have schools that are always rated on top or coming down the bottom, only because they're not measuring enough progress. We did fairly well. It was inaccurate. The full report is twenty pages in length. I'm waiting for it to come to me. As soon as I get it, I'll email it to you guys. It's not a grading report, she said, but rather a performance report. How well the students have done over the course of a year. Unlike the other ones, where, you know, we're leading forty-six in the country. That's a different, a different set of criteria used. Over 2,100 schools were listed, including charter schools, so they're in there also. Judy Savage, Executive Director of New Jersey Council of County Vocational and Technical Schools, and her, and a classroom teacher, Chris Nagy, presented an overview of county vocational schools. This was in Trenton this weekend. The next Bergen County Passaic meeting will be held on March 29th. It's legislative. We're expecting fifteen state legislators, most importantly, after the budget numbers have been released. My dream has always been to be able to reserve a table at this meeting with our board members being present. One of our goals as a Board of Education was to attain certified board level. We've got to start moving on it because it's not a simple thing to do. I have the listing here of what's involved, and it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different things you have to do. Part of it is earn sixteen credits of group training within a four-year period. So it's really difficult to attain, but it's doable. It's kind of embarrassing, we've been there all these times, we see, we're never there. We never, we never react as, we're sort of, not this board, but all the years, fairly parochial. We stay here. I try to show here, these various meetings in various counties, there's a lot going on, a lot of good stuff. And it costs you nothing, the evening. It's all paid for. Jersey School Boards feed you and give you the presentation. So that's all I have to say. That's what's been going on for the last month and a half. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking all that time and attending those meetings. Thank you.
My wife's happy.
Okay. Yes.
One more for, for Policy Committee. On 15G, we have a bunch of regulations and policies on for first reading. 5460 deals with high school transcripts, policy and regulation. 7440, our school district security. 7441 deal with electronic surveillance. Policy 8630 refers to bus driver and bus aid responsibility. Regulation 8630 is emergency bus procedures. And policy and regulation 9700 refer to special interest groups. Most of those are updates on code recitations, some language updates, nothing, nothing crazy. On for second reading and adoption is 7422 is the School Integrated Pest Management Plan. Only change there is we had to name, I think Scott, as our coordinator. So that's the only difference there. Obviously, the ones that are on for first reading, we have a second reading if there are some changes that we want to make next time around. But that's what's up there for, for tonight.
Can I ask a question?
No.
You had to mention Scott as by name. Why? Because it was another, another position that didn't happen. I can't remember if it was offhand.
For this one in particular, the School Integrated Pest Management Plan, they wanted the person. I don't know why. That's the only time that I've ever seen it. one billion dollars. At this point, they expect same, uh, same as last year. Governor's looking at two millionaires tax increase, but fear that such a move would drive those one percenters out of the state by place, and then placing the burden on the rest of our taxpayers. Relying on legalizing marijuana, not a sure bet. Uh, superintendent's cap will be, will be discussed by the Senate Budget Committee this coming week. Thoughts are to, to, the cap will return to local control rather than, uh, what we have now. Uh, reason B, we lost, we lost a lot of good people and those who filled the gap, because the company excluded, we're not experienced. And we're learning on the job. Uh, we, we've been very lucky with what we have. I'm not kissing that. Cadillac tax on health benefits, forty percent excise tax on, uh, health benefits. That's been pushed back to twenty twenty-two. We're not gonna touch it right. Federal government's a little leery of that. Now, one of the interesting things, uh, Dennis, is Senate Bill fourteen fourteen, it's called Passing the Trash. Has passed the Senate, will probably pass Assembly this week. While an explanation is in, but this is in your packet briefly. Normally when a school district employee is released and vetted by another employer, the previous employer will admit that the employee was in fact employed by the district. Nothing more is said. Under this new law, if an employee has been released for any sexual misconduct or child abuse, uh, the prospective employee must answer three questions. And those questions... They're actually, they're in your packet.
Been the subject of any child abuse or sexual misconduct investigation.
That's it, thank you.
By the employer, law enforcement, or state agency. Been disciplined, discharged, non-renewed, asked to resign, et cetera, while allegations were pending under investigation. And finally had a license, uh, certification suspended while allegations pending under investigation or due to.
Thank you. The previous employer must then certify that the employee's responses were correct. Additionally, this law will, will, would prohibit confidential separation agreements with a sexual misconduct or child abuse cases involved. Will not affect other confidential separation agreements. This all occurred on Saturday, February tenth, by the way. The head of Diana Pesquale, Pesculi, Pesculi?
Pesquale.
All right. She's New Jersey Chief Public Affairs Officer, offered a continuing explanation of the new school rating system. For high school, if you look at the, uh, if you look at the rating system, it's, it's confusing. In fact, I, I dashed an email off to our superintendent and said, criteria is not correct, there's something wrong. And what it was, they based it on, for high school students, on graduation, grade of graduation, absenteeism, park scores. In the elementary and middle schools, scores are based upon absenteeism, park, and student progress on park tests. The new ratings were established to comply with the federal Every Student, the SSA, Every Student Success Act. Measuring key areas of the progress, to measure the key areas of progress. That's why the numbers are, are skewed. They have schools that are always rated on top are coming down to bottom, only because they're not measuring enough progress. We did fairly well. Uh, but was inaccurate. The full report is twenty pages in length. I'm waiting for it to come to me. As soon as I get it, I'll email it to you, email it to you guys. It's not a grading report, she said, but rather a performance report. How well the students have done over the course of a year. Unlike the other ones where, you know, we're, we're, they're forty-six in the country. Um, that's a different, a different set of criteria used. Over twenty-one hundred schools were listed, including the charter schools, so they're in there also. Judy Savage, Executive Director of New Jersey Council of County Vocational Technical Schools, and her, and a classroom teacher, Chris Nagy, presented an overview of county vocational schools. This was in Trenton this weekend. The next Bergen County Passaic meeting will be held on March twenty-ninth. It's legislative. We're expecting fifteen state legislators, most importantly, after the budget numbers have been released. My dream has always been to have, be able to reserve a table at this meeting with our board members being present. One of our goals as a, as a Board of Education was to attain certified board level. We've gotta start moving on it because it's not a simple thing to do. I have the, the listing here of what's involved and, uh, it's, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different things you have to do. Part of it is earn sixteen credits of group training within a four-year period. So it's really difficult to attain, uh, but it's doable. It's kind of embarrassing, we've been there all these times, see, we're never there. Uh, we never, we never react as, we're sort of, you know, not this board, but all the years, fairly parochial. We stay here. As I tried to show here, these various meetings in various counties, there's a lot going on, a lot of good stuff. And it costs you nothing, the evening. Uh, it's all paid for. Uh, Jersey School Boards, uh, feed you and give you the presentation. So, um, that's all I have to say. That's what's been going on for the last, um, month and a half. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking all that time. Thank you for those meetings, thank you.
My wife's happy.
One more for, um, uh, for Policy Committee. On fifteen G, we have a bunch of, uh, regulations and policies on for first reading. Um, fifty-four sixty deals with high school transcripts, uh, policy and regulation. Seventy-four forty, uh, our school district security. Seventy-four forty-one deal with electronic surveillance. Um, policy eighty-six thirty, uh, refers to bus driver and bus aid responsibility. Regulation eighty-six thirty is emergency bus procedures. And, uh, policy and regulation ninety-seven hundred refer to, uh, special interest groups. Um, most of those are updates on code recitations, um, some language updates, nothing, nothing crazy. Uh, on for second reading and adoption is seventy-four twenty-two is the School Integrated Pest Management Plan. Um, the only change there is we had to name, I think Scott, as our coordinator. So that's the only difference there. Um, obviously, the, the ones that are on for first reading, we have a second reading if there are some changes that we wanna make next time around. Um, but that's what's up there for, uh, for tonight.
Can I ask a question?
No.
You put something to my, when you mentioned, where you had to mention Scott as by name. Why? Because it, it was another, another position that didn't happen. I can't remember if it was offhand.
Yeah, for this one in particular, the school, the, in School Integrated Pest Management Plan, they wanted the person. I don't know why. That, that's the only time that I've ever seen it as well.
You're, you're absolutely right. Typically, it's done in general, a little senior principal or the curriculum director.
Right, or the, who the position is.
We were just recently monitored for our integrated pest management and they took a look at our policy and they said, you must include exactly who the person is. You know, I prefer it more general in case there is a change in position, is what happens. So in this case, if there ever happens to be, then we'll just go back and change it. But they told us we must, so we did to comply.
Yep.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on reports or other non-agenda items?
Yes, yes. I would just like to acknowledge the passing of Doris Conover. For those of you who don't know, Doris served on the Mawa Board of Ed approximately twenty years ago, I believe. And I'm not sure how many terms, but she was a wonderful woman. She died last week. She also was in the women's club in town, several other committees. And I just wanted you all to be aware.
Thank you. Forward that information to, to your school boards and they will put it in their, in their printed material for passing.
I have one other thing that I wanted to mention is I attended the, uh, screening of the documentary, Dying in Vain, by Dr. Jenny McKenzie. And, um, it was very riveting. It was very hard hitting. It's about an hour long. You can see it on Hulu, so if you wanna go on Hulu, you can watch it. Um, the Mawa High School Community Problem Solving Club attended. And, um, they would like to try to get it into our school. Now, it is, it would be rated R, so it would be an opt-in situation where parents would have to, you know, agree to have their children watch it. But it is something that, um, in my opinion, I think that this would really, really, uh, impact the students because it's, it's real-life situations, as opposed to an adult coming in and talking down to them about drugs. And, um, and I spoke to the director about that and she said that that's, um, a huge issue because kids shut down when the police come in or when someone from a drug rehab's, you know, unless it's a specific person. So, um, this, and this, uh, Dr. McKenzie would also come if we were to do that with, uh, someone else and, and help us with getting a panel together and everything else. So, but it was very, very, a very, very tough documentary to watch, but, um, a very, very good one. So I just wanted to, um, let everyone know about that. I was through the Mawa Municipal Lines, that was.
Um, okay, um, old business, we have a motion to move on old business. Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. Gallo. Any discussion on, old minutes? Everybody's good with it? All right.
Of course. Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Okay, now I have sixteen, uh, fifteen, I'm sorry. Fifteen, A through K, I'd like to take as a block. I have a motion to proceed, Mr. Wendrickowitz, second by Mr. De Silva. Questions, comments?
Of course. Mr. Gallo?
Yes, except I am abstaining on checks number eight-nine-six-six-one and eight-nine-four-seven-five that are part of fifteen A.
Thank you. Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes, but I'm abstaining on fifteen E.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
All right, now I'd like to take a block of sixteen A through S as in Sam, between Mr. Mr. Kizmarski, second by Mr. Wendrickowitz. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions on any of those items? All right, thank you.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kizmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Sacone?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes. Okay, public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes.
Evelyn Slakbauer, forty-three, Thunderhead Place. Okay, I just wanted some quick updates on the technology initiative and is there anything, any updates to be, um?
Would you like me to do this? Um, the Technology Committee met right before our board meeting tonight. Uh, we're prepared at our next board meeting on February twenty-eighth, um, to do a, uh, technology audit presentation. That's gonna talk about all of our hardware, all of our software, and our infrastructure. Within that presentation, which I sent you as chair, then also includes some recommendations as far as moving forward, and I believe that will speak to what you're talking about as far as the technology initiative is concerned. So I'm gonna wait until Carlos Rosa and Sue DeVito, our tech, uh, integration supervisor, to do that for us in February.
Great. Um, high school parking lot, did you hear anything back from the police about the traffic?
That is, that is a great question as well. I spoke to Chief Vitale. Um, apparently the town has also, uh, brought in an engineer, uh, to take a look at what's going on as far as, uh, the traffic is concerned. He's in the process of completing his study. I anticipate that he'll meet with the chief of police first, um, and then he'll meet with us. It is my hope that the facilities committee will be able to have some time to sit with us and to take a look at what those recommendations would include, which I anticipate are gonna cost a little bit of money, not just move in a bush.
Okay.
So, up, up and coming, up and coming. So we're just, we're just waiting patiently and we're happy to work with the town along with us.
And then the videotaping that you're gonna be doing of the meetings, I guess.
Right, you turn around and say hi.
Yeah. So, uh, I guess, you know, what steps are coming with this? And will it be livestream? Will it just be on the website? Um, what is the, what is the game plan?
Right now, it's just on the website. It's gonna be uploaded to the website. Um, we haven't discussed as a group as to whether to try live streaming or not, but it's something that I think we tossed around a little bit. Um, so we have gotten an answer for you, as far as that's concerned. But right now, it's going to be directly uploaded to the website, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Ms. Conoco, second by Ms. Sacone. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thank you all for attending.